I'll go ahead and get the meeting started. Thank you for being patient with us. We had another long work session tonight. If I can all get you to all please rise for the invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Rick Malagani. He's the pastor of Fairhope Christian Church, which is Fairhope's oldest church. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Thank you for this wonderful day, dear God, and we ask for your presence here this evening. Please grant us wisdom, courage, and patience as we deliberate the future of this fair city. May we all seek your will and purposes in everything we do now and forevermore. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Malagani. Okay, council, first order of business, I would like to amend the agenda. There was one item we discussed in the work session, and that was the ordinance, which is, where's that at Clark?
It's in your work session.
What's in there? Okay. Has it got a number? It's the ordinance pertaining to the park fees. If we could get a motion, and one more thing before you make a motion. There it is. It would be ordinance number 1613, and it would be amending that ordinance with the two changes.
I think this is the first one. There's not a number.
Okay. It's on the second page in the work session. The second thing that I would ask you to add, and I apologize for the late notice, we just ran out of time in the work session, would be to procure an electrician for the Fairhope docks to furnish and install the labor and electrical equipment for the new fueling system. The cost is $7,795. I am going to, before I entertain a motion, I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Crazes is here now as well, if they want to speak to this, and there's a sense of urgency so that we can get this fuel system up and running by Memorial Day. As I understand it, the fuel tank may be delivered as soon as tomorrow morning. Mr. Crazes, would you brief council on that real quick?
I walked in on the tail end of it, but basically, as of this morning, the tank's supposed to be delivered Monday morning?
Monday morning.
Or not, or Monday, sometime Monday. They're finishing up some finalization of the interior coatings. And what was your question for the?
Just give your reasons for wanting to walk this on the agenda tonight.
Basically, what it is, is we basically, we decided not to go above ground or below ground with the electrical, the conduit and stuff, for future, looking down the road and not, if you had to do any type of repairs, is not bust up the concrete pad, because it is 22 by 40 pad. We've got a lot of money, a lot of time put into that. So basically, what we do is, we would go on top of the slab with the conduit and the explosion-proof fittings, and that's what basically makes it a little bit more expensive, opposed to going underground with it.
I understand that these people are on state bid list already?
They are.
So it didn't have to be let out for bid, right?
No, it does not have to be let out for bid, and they also, they're installing the Fuel Master system that was approved a couple of months ago as well. Once said and done, they will also be doing a final startup procedure, once we've fueling, got the tanks completely loaded, and tanks, everything will be operational.
So if we approve this tonight, you feel pretty confident we'll get this distribution system up and running by Memorial Day?
Memorial Day weekend. I'm pushing for it.
Okay. No chance if we don't pass it, is it?
No.
Another way to look at it, isn't it? Okay. All right, council, you've heard the arguments to add those two items to the agenda. I would like to entertain a motion to amend tonight's agenda to add the park fee ordinance, ordinance number, amending of ordinance number 1613. You can see those changes in your work session packet. That would be item 20, and then also to add the awarding of the furnishing of labor and electrical equipment for the new fueling system at a cost of $7795. Can I hear a motion to amend the? Have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to add these two items? Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of amending the agenda as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye, opposed, say nay. Okay. Thank you, council. All right. First order of business will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings which were held on April the 23rd. Council, do you have any changes, additions, or deletions to those minutes you'd like to make? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
A motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, minutes are approved. Thank you. Report of the mayor will be given by Ms. Lynn Mazer tonight. Ms. Mazer?
Thank you, council. I had the pleasure of delivering the mayor's report this evening, because she is in Washington, DC, at Infrastructure Week, which is sponsored by the Coastal Alabama Partnership. The mayor is joining 10 other coastal Alabama mayors, including Mayors Haygood of Daphne, McMillan of Spanish Fort, Wills of Bay Minette, four county commissioners, and eight area businesses, in a concentrated two-day event in which she will be meeting with Congressman Byrne and Senators Jones and Shelby. Included in their very full agenda is a meeting with the president's innovation team and members of the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. So, she's in DC, the real DC way of doing things. We want to congratulate Jeff Williams this evening on completing his golf course and turf management one degree. He will get his diploma in June. That's an important step, as we are moving to improve our golf course management programs. We know Jeff recognizes that working with living organisms presents new challenges every day, and the learning truly never does end. So we congratulate Jeff on his agreement, his achievement. The painting of the water tank remains an issue, but the mayor wanted everybody to know that it is moving forward, probably a little more slowly than we'd wish, but it is moving forward. Getting properly trained personnel has been an issue that we've had to deal with, but as we enter the hot summer months, we will need to conserve water as much as possible. The tank represents 2 million gallons of water that we do not have in service right now, since it is empty. Workers are concentrating on getting the inside completed, and after the appropriate inspections, we will bring the tank back online and paint the outside. Meanwhile, our utilities department will keep us up to date on any future advisories. We were advised at supervisors' meeting that last week, that 40 percent of the 2019 weekends have already been booked for events at the NICS Center. It's lovely to have a facility that is so well-used. We've received several compliments on our staff at NICS and their helpfulness at the events that are held there so far this year. Also, Quail Creek Golf Course has been super busy with tournaments already this year, and every group, Jeff advised us, that has held a tournament so far, has either booked for next year or promised to call to book their event again next year as soon as they tie down a date. The organizers of these events have spoken highly of how helpful our staff has been in making their events successful. We also want to mention tonight that we have had a lot of feedback from people about our flowers this year, which we discussed earlier this evening. The general opinion is that they look better than they ever have, and we agree. Thank you very much to Paul Merchant and his crew. Ron Hayes visited the directors' meeting on Friday, and he is the newest member of the Personnel Advisory Board. Those of you who know him, he is very heavily involved in safety issues, workplace safety issues. He put forth a program to the directors that we will be looking to implementing in safety training for all city employees, and that, we have more details to come, but the directors seemed very enthusiastic and supportive of that. And finally, we have three proclamations this evening, and please, everybody, just bear with me with all the whereases that I'm about to have to speak to. First, the first one is the National Safe Boating Week. I believe Richard Geiger, flotilla commander, United States Coast Guard Auxiliary 36, is here to accept the proclamation. Good evening. Okay. Whereas the National Safe Boating Week is May 19th through the 25th, 2018, and boating safety partners across the US and Canada are teaming up to promote safe and responsible boating, including voluntary wear of life jackets. And whereas life jacket wear is the number-one precaution a boater can take to stay safe on the water, and drowning remains a primary cause of death in recreational boating accidents. And whereas the Fairhope Flotilla Chapter of the US Coast Guard Auxiliary is dedicated to improving the knowledge, skills, and abilities of recreational boaters in order to reduce deaths and injuries, and now therefore, in an effort to raise public awareness of these important issues, Karen Wilson, as mayor of the city of Fairhope, does hereby proclaim May 19th through the 25th, 2018, as National Safe Boating Week, and encourages all of our citizens to join with the Fairhope US Coast Guard Flotilla Chapter and take advantage of boater education information offered to further enhance safe and enjoyable boating on our nation's waters. Congratulations.
Thank you. And thanks for the proclamation.
Sure. Here, this is yours.
You stand there.
Thank you. Congratulations. Our second. Yes. Our second proclamation is for National Public Works Week from May 20th to the 26th, and I believe our very own director of public works, Richard Johnson, is here to accept this proclamation on behalf of his department. And here we are. Whereas, public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people in the city of Fairhope; and whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees from state and local units of government, and the private sector, who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works professionals; and whereas 2018 marks the 58th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And now therefore, Karen Wilson, mayor of the city of Fairhope, does hereby proclaim May 20th through the 26th as National Public Works Week, and encourages all of our citizens to recognize public work professionals for their contributions to this community's health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And our third and final proclamation for this evening is National Police Work Week, excuse me, which began Sunday and runs through Saturday. I believe Chief Pettis is here to accept the mayor's proclamation on behalf of our own Fairhope Police Department. Whereas, in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation designating May 15 as Police Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as National Police Week; and whereas the members of the Fairhope Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights, freedoms of the citizens of Fairhope; and whereas it is important that all citizens understand the challenges, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation; and whereas the Police Department of Fairhope has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service; and now therefore, be it resolved that Karen Wilson, mayor of the city of Fairhope, does formally recognize the members of the Fairhope Police Department for their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities and dedication to the community, accordingly declaring May 13th to May 19th, 2018, as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2018, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Further, the city of Fairhope wishes to honor all police officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And that is the mayor's report.
Thought without the mayor here to be a short report. Hold on. Before we get to public participation on agenda items, I do want to ask Mr. Dias to clarify something I believe that you said you may want to table, item five.
Yes, sir, council president. We have an item on the agenda, second reading for the accessory dwelling units, and reviewing this, I believe we have an internal conflict within the ordinance between the table, print, uses, and also some other parts of the ordinance. I'm asking this be tabled until the next meeting for, give us a chance to look at that and make sure we tie up any loose ends. We want to make sure that there are no unintended consequences to this, and so I would like to have a chance to look at it, review it, and then bring it back at the next meeting.
If you bring this back, will we have to re-advertise it, reintroduce it, and then wait another two weeks? I'm just kind of trying to find out the, just in case it impacts people, how long would it be before we could?
Right.
I know we can always suspend with the rules, and maybe we determine that the changes are modest enough that we do that, but worst case, I mean, I'm just wondering if we have to, if it's substantial enough that we have to re-advertise the ordinance?
That's a very good question. I would anticipate that it would be minor in nature, however, I'll be glad to work with Marcus and make sure that, let him weigh in on that. If there are significant changes we make, does that need to be re-advertized? We want to make sure that we, we're not, you know, violating any kind of notice provisions or anything like that.
Right. Counsel, I just wanted you to be cognizant of that. Mr. Dias told me just briefly prior to this meeting that, that we do have some conflict, and we should resolve this before we pass this.
Yes, sir.
At least we'll be back in here like we did on the park fees.
And this issue's not, this is not urgent, this is just one of those things on the list we were discussing, so it's nothing urgent, there's nothing that's pressing this, we want to make sure we get it right. These are some changes that I would deem significant. Now, the current changes only pertain to the business district, so there's not, this is not a blanket for anything in residential, although there are some impacts to residential. The current language we have, we want to make sure that this is not going to somehow interfere with those, and so that's why we're asking to be tabled.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dias. So, people in the audience, if you did want to speak to item five, if you're here for that, council, if I can just take a quick straw poll, do you think we'll table this? Okay, I think we should take the advice of our planning director and table this. So, if you're here to speak to item five, it's not going to be up for discussion. Hopefully, it'll be reintroduced at the next council meeting with the changes.
Yes, sir. And, council president, if there's concerns in the audience, I'd be glad to talk to them and meet with them, make sure we understand what their concerns are as well, if there's people out there who want to know more about the amendment.
There may be, yeah.
Right. Great. I'd be glad to meet with them and go over it with them, and make sure we get everybody's comments before we bring it back.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dias. Okay, we'll move to public participation. If you want to speak to items six through now 21, please come forward to the podium. Remember, this is only agenda items right now. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, that must wait till the final public participation session. So, items six through 21, podium is open. Okay, so you know when I will close public participation for agenda items, and move on to council comments. Councilman Robinson?
Yes, sir. I want to start, I want to recognize our utilities department, specifically our electric department, for receiving the certificate of excellence and reliability from the Alabama Municipal Electric Authority. We are grateful for everything you do, and everybody's grateful for the air condition that you keep us in during these hot summer months. Next, I want to recognize our fire chief, Chris Ellis, who was recognized as the Ballin County Fire Chief of the Year. I believe, was it two weeks ago, Chris? So congratulations to that. You do a great job. We're proud to have you in Fairhope, and thank you for everything that you do. And last, I want to say congratulations to all our recent graduates, and I want to offer my condolences to the parents, especially those to you that had high school children graduating. My wife called me today just to sob and mess after my child's preschool graduation. So I don't know how, I don't know how you guys, I hope you're handling it better than we are in my house. But again, congratulations to all the graduates, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Counsel McConyers?
Yeah, I'd just like to add something about the graduation. I attended the ceremony last night. Tom Cool and his crew had the field looking fantastic. We got lucky with the weather. It was about, I think, 350 people that graduated, and they made an announcement during the graduation that collectively, as a group, they had been offered, I believe, over $20 million in scholarships. So, Fairhope High School had a really impressive group of students graduating, lots of honors, but, you know, just a big congratulations to all the parents and the students. That's quite a milestone and a big life achievement, and the fact that we had 50 percent of elected officials being represented was also very significant. And then, I'll take a moment just to brag on my daughter, I don't normally do that from here, but she won the Fairhope Intermediate School Talent Show today, so she was real excited and worked real hard prepping for that, and I'm sure she deserved it, and a shout-out to her buddy Wyatt Aiken came in second place. That's it.
Thank you. Counselman Brown, I'm going to skip over you. Go to Councilman Boone. I'll come back to you.
Well, actually, all I've got is, we have, there will be no personnel board meeting for this month of May. The upcoming meeting will be announced, and I really appreciate the turnout for the state cook-off, since the money does go to charity, and it had a great turnout. So great, I didn't get a thing to eat. Had to go to Waffle House at nine o'clock at night. So we're going to have to make arrangements to take a little bit better care of the council people, the state cook-off. Anyway, I really appreciate the fine turnout that we had. It turned out very, very well, and then went off without a hitch. Thank you.
You need to ask to be a judge next year.
Amen.
Counselman Brown, I didn't know if you had a guest that you might want to introduce, and so I put you off.
I think we got a couple things before that. Again, I want to congratulate all the graduates of Fairhope class of 2018. Also, well done, Mr. Caldwell and Mr. Coleman for a well-run graduation, get 353, I believe. Students graduated in about an hour and 15 minutes, pretty impressive, and the weather was great. For those of y'all that didn't attend the Theater on the Bluff, you missed it. Baron Langley nailed the Newsies production, probably one of my favorite. Be there next year if you didn't make it. As far as committees, like a pedestrian update, I met recently with Sherri Lee and Richard Johnson, discussed some sidewalks downtown, trying to get a little bit better connectivity, a little bit safer route. Met with the building owner, and they said, "Come back to it when you're ready." I've gotten that from Richard, so I'll try to call up with the building owner here in the next few days. Financial advisory committee kind of had a little unexpected turn as far as direction, and Chairman Chuck Zunk is here tonight to give us an update on that.
Thank you, Robert. Council members, earlier this week, I sent to each of you background material regarding the change in status of the Financial Advisory Committee. I'll not repeat all that detail here tonight, but here's a brief summary. Prior to the recent May meeting of the Financial Advisory Committee, we received an email from the mayor on April 24th that changed the ground rules on our ability to gather facts from the mayor and city staff. Although the email was written with specific reference to the project of preparing for the fiscal year 2019 budget, it seemed to us to apply to all of our projects. Our interpretation of the email was that, number one, it changed the relationship between the committee and the city staff from collaborative and cooperative, which it had been up until that point, to adversarial. And two, it restricted our access to acquiring facts from city staff so much as to be essentially cut off. Under those circumstances, we are unable to function as you had requested, and so we suspended consideration of all of our active projects pending discussion with city council. As I mentioned in the background material, the YouTube video of our May 10th meeting explains very clearly our position. We would like to receive some guidance from city council, and perhaps this might be discussed in more detail at your next council workshop that I'd be happy to attend. However, if you do have any particular comments at this time, in consideration of all the material I sent you, I'd be happy to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zunk.
Yeah, I mean, back to the, it's unfortunate, the kind of the direction it has turned. I understand the frustration of the committee. It's a committee of retired business CEOs, bankers, with over 100 years of business experience of managing multimillion-dollar companies, and they're volunteering their time to help give council guidance on the best way to fund some of these major projects that we have coming up on the horizon, and they've kind of been shut out, if you will, of trying to get information to help guide the council on those decisions. So hopefully, we can, we can get things straightened out, I mean, and not trying to be political with it, just trying to get the facts so we can make informed decisions, what's best for the city.
Yeah, I'm hoping we can find a solution to this. I'm not sure what it would be. I'm particularly concerned with respect to the annual budget coming up for fiscal 2019, because that's the most pressing item from a scheduling point of view. And unfortunately, the way we interpret the mayor's email is, we're not going to be allowed to participate that, in that project until it's all done, and have absolutely no insight into how it was constructed until we actually get the final draft. And then, according to her schedule, we'd be expected to review that and somehow in six days divine all the answers to the questions and act on it to pass it along to you. So, I just, it's not a tenable situation right now.
Right. In an effort to streamline, you know, the, last year, the Financial Advisory Committee was formed, I think, maybe after the second or third draft of the budget we had. So they really, they didn't have any input last year, and they were looking forward to meeting with department heads and trying to come up with some solutions where there might have been some issues last year, but anyway.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll get there.
Hopefully, we can discuss this in the future, give you guys a chance to think about it. And we, we also need to think about it ourselves, and hopefully come forward with some ideas to push this out of the rut that it seems to be in right now. Thank you.
Mr. Zunk, I want to tell you and the rest of the Financial Advisory Committee, we do appreciate all of your service. We do value your opinion, and I hope that we will come up with a solution to this to keep you intact and keep you on board. So hang in there, and it might be that maybe we need to call, maybe you need to call a specially-called Financial Advisory Committee meeting, so that we can sit down, a public meeting, and talk about what the council can do to assist you to gain access.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
The council shares your frustration in being able to talk to staff members to put together the budget as well.
And I'll be talking to Robert, who's our council, or our committee liaison, and we'll come up with some creative ideas on how to start moving this thing. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Chuck.
Check out one more thing, since we didn't have department head updates. Richard Johnson, where did that Purple Heart Community sign? Has it been put up yet? I saw the one coming through Daphne the other day, and I said, "I need to..."
Yes, they have, but I'm going to figure out exactly where they put them up. They were in my office, and I sent the sign guy and George to pick, and Arthur to pick the two best, you know, highest-profile locations, and I know they went out the door. I will have you an answer by eight o'clock in the morning. Fair enough?
Yes, sir.
And I am pretty confident they are up. I just don't know exactly where we put them up. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. That's it.
Okay. When you called Richard, I thought you were going to call Richard Peterson. I had a laundry list of things to discuss, and Jade mentioned a fire chief. Y'all started talking about graduation, all these things. I don't get, I don't have anything left to talk about except business. So, Mr. Peterson, I believe that you wanted to address the council with regards to the library repairs, is that correct?
Yes.
And apologize for not being able to get to it in work session, but I think it's important and... important enough that we, we get you up here and put you under my comments to talk about...
I'll save it for the three-minute presentation after the meeting.
If you could keep it to three, that'd be great, but...
That's why I was waiting for the three-minute time. But anyway, we did receive bids last Tuesday, and I had sent y'all an email with the bid results. And, you know, the, the bids are higher than what we had anticipated. Yeah, I'm, I'd be happy...
He did, he sent me a bit up there.
Except my timer on my watch here too, or my... But anyway, the bids are higher than we thought they should be. And we had two bids, so it's not like we have one contractor we can try to negotiate with because of receiving just one bid. According to the architect, there may be some flexibility in negotiating up to ten percent, which would be what would be a typical, you know, maximum change order to go in the other way, but we'd go backwards, obviously. But, you know, the, the building leaks and the, the construction has some unique issues that need to be addressed. And doing it while the building could be occupied and, and, you know, having some exposure to afternoon rain events that could further complicate, you know, getting the thing done. I, I don't know that if we determine that we're gonna throw out these bids and start over. You know, it seemed like the odds are fifty-fifty, we may get a better price, we may get a higher price. I just think we, we've got a price, we've got a contractor that's got the qualifications, and, you know, sometimes it doesn't work out the way you hoped it would and you just move forward with what you got to work with. And I think that's what we need to do.
Mr. Peterson, thank you. Counsel, a little bit more is that the, the low bid came in, by some estimates, as much as fifty percent over what we expected.
Right. And I, and I think the estimate creeped up a little bit as the plans became more developed. So, I think with the estimate was more...
It could be totally legitimate, but it, it, it equals hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so, you know, we got pressure from the citizens to finish this. We have pressures from the library to finish this. Sometimes contractors know that and can use that to command top dollar. Every contractor that's, that's, you know, worth their weight in salt right now has got more work than they, than they need, and, and subs are in short supply, and that's driving up the cost of construction. And it, and that's probably the reason that we're seeing this.
And in this particular case, the roofing contractor, the subcontractor that would do the roof, I think that price came in a little high to both of the bidders, from what I understand, so...
What I would, I, I ask you to do, counsel, is to try to make an effort to get with Mr. Peterson and, and just, we, we probably need to get it on the next agenda. And, and we can debate it at the next meeting and decide whether or not we're going to... You know, you have time to make up your mind whether you want to vote for or against it. But either way, we need to bring it to a vote, and, I mean, it's a tough, it's, it's tough to vote on something that costs a lot more. We, we punted on the soccer fields when they came in at five and a half million. We didn't eliminate one field and we got it down to two and a half million. We saved three million dollars when we did that. And, but there's no guarantee that would happen here, and, you know, you, you might come in with higher bids. It's, that's a possibility, so...
I would encourage you to talk to the, the library, and you're the council liaison.
Yeah, I think this has been, you know, we've been talking about this for probably a year already, maybe longer, so I know they're anxious to just see us proceed and move ahead. I mean, it's hard to stomach the, the bids that you sent. Those are both reputable companies, so I, I know they're, they're good quality, quality work they would perform. Is there an opportunity to, to do a, some type of minor value engineering that's not gonna slow this down, or do we need to just kind of say, "Okay, what we've got is what we've got"?
Yeah, and we, I talked with the architect about that, and, you know, we'd done a pretty extensive forensic investigation of all of the different issues that were causing leaks. And to address each one of those, it, it just built upon itself into a project that was pretty significant. Now, you know, the library's one of the best assets we have in the city, I would think. Everybody would agree with that. And, you know, I think the investment that would bring the entire exterior, you know, up to like new condition and having the, the leaks addressed during that process, I, you know, it's, it's, if you look at the value of the building and that, you know, you're looking at ten or fifteen percent of the value to do that, it's, it's really not a bad investment, but it still hurts.
It hurts, and I don't want to send signals to contractors that they can throw any price out there, and because we're anxious, we'll accept anything, even the danger of it.
And I would say, and, and in that, you know, line of, or train of thought, we, we do have some pretty significant capital improvement projects coming forward. And, and to the contrary, to, to be in a position to want to reject bids anytime we don't like the prices, also drives the price up for those future projects, because people do invest a lot of time and effort putting prices together. And, and to not know that if they put their best effort, we're, we're gonna accept that and, and move forward with it, you know, we, it may cost us in other ways too that we're not quite sure of.
Right, then you won't get bids.
I just wonder if we could sit down in the next couple of weeks before the work session and sit with the, the two bidders or the low bid and just say, "All right, if you're doing this project, what would you VE to, to cut some costs?" And, and find out if there's anything that's worth saving so that we're not slowing down the time to get us on the agenda, but trying to save a little bit of money just to make it a little more palatable.
I think the, the ten percent negotiation you may have with the low bidder is about the best you're gonna be able to do without rejecting and rebidding it.
That's a stay off, ten percent.
Oh, okay. That's just capped out.
And there, there is some contingency money in there. I think the architect was talking about fifty thousand dollars that, that is in case something... And, you know, when we did the forensic investigation, we took isolated locations of places that had problems. Well, when you start to expand the repair work, there may be some places that we wind up finding, and there may not. But, you know, there is some contingency money in that bid that may come back to us. Of course, it could go the other way too, I'm not, but, you know, I mean, it's, you know, you don't know when it's a building that's, I, I think the best thing to do is to get it fixed and, and whatever we learn from the experience might, you know, make us better in terms of either whether it be routine maintenance or whether it be, you know, an opportunity to make sure we get what we need to have on, on the front end.
Counsel, I'd ask you just to, to talk to Richard. I think that the surest way to, and make, the surest way to, to make certain the next bids are on the high end is to give signals that we're always going to take whatever's given us. Not good negotiations, but anyway.
And that may be, right.
No, I'm not saying I would vote against it either, it's just, I'm not saying I would. That's it.
And I do have a few other comments, but I will save those when you can put the timer on in the three-minute.
What did you, what did you want to talk about? We really don't have time for more.
Well, the outfall line, you know, I'm, I'm trying to work with Volker, who did the original outfall project, and, and I've created a few sketches and, and I would like to be able just to use them on an hourly rate to draw enough in terms of plans and, coordinate some of the, maybe, there may be some core engineers issue with the spoil that we'll have to dis, not dispose of, but, but pile somewhere while we create, you know, a, a place along that pipeline that we can repair it with. And, you know, I, I think that's the quick and easiest way to do it. We, we can go other routes, but I think we'll wind up in the same place at the end of the day. The...
I thought that was on the agenda tonight, Rich. I'm sorry, I thought we were gonna get to that later, but I don't, I don't see it now.
No, so I, I, I apologize too. I sent you a kind of an outline of what this report would be.
I got you, go ahead.
And, but, and I got it late, and I apologize for that. Marcus and I have talked about, the Van Antwerp subdivision is, is being developed, and, and the fire protection is just under what we would like to see for the R-two zone, which requires, you know, a, a minimum setback of, of ten feet. He can put, he, he can build his subdivision and make his site setbacks twelve feet without increasing the fire protection. He'd like to increase the fire protection, and, and I think there's a benefit to everybody in that neighborhood to do that. It provides redundant water capacity in case we do have some, you know, some leaks or anything up there. So, I would like to work with Marcus to, to look at a, a resolution that you'd consider next council meeting that would share the cost of that extension from what would be North Section to Pensacola with a six-inch line to reinforce that system for that subdivision and increase the fire protection capacity in that whole neighborhood. I'd like to be able to do that if we could. I, I sent you an email about the rec center in, in a facade. We think we're about to get to the point to put bids out for that. And, and the last thing I wanted to bring up, which it may be better at the end of the meeting anyway, is the property for the substation site along Young Street. And I'm happy to wait.
Why don't you go ahead, because we had a long meeting, and we had executive sessions, so go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead and let you do that now in case somebody wants to cut out.
If, if you saw the state of the city and, and the, the comments that were made from the community, you know, I made a mistake in, in looking at what the, the best site is to build a substation. I didn't necessarily look at what the best site was to consider the emotional connections that, that the neighborhood has to that location. It's obvious to me that, that it's a mistake to put it there. So, what I'd like to do is move it to a site, there, there's only two sites available. And the reason we, we have to put it on Young is because the forty-six thousand volt line that comes out of the Twin Beach Substation runs on Young Street. And it turns to go to the Church Street Lift Station over on Morphe, but, but the, the core of the electric distribution system that is established is at that corner of Young and Nichols, where, where the existing substation is. There's a site right across the street from it that's two hundred by two hundred, Riviera Utilities owns, that, and I forwarded y'all the appraisal for that property. And, and I think that is the best alternate site to put that lift station. The only other site that you can find along that stretch would be on what would be the south, southeast corner of Simpson Field. You know, that, that site is obviously big enough, but I, but I think that, you know, that there are soccer teams and football teams that use that area for practice sites. And I don't know that I want to, you know, take away what can be used by the kids playing in those sports. But anyway, that, that's the, the genesis of the, the project, is to try to develop the substation that will eventually replace the substation that's on the corner of Nichols and Young on what would be the northeast corner, replace it with a substation on what would be the northwest corner. And, and that substation would have the adequate capacity to pick up the additional load of the Church Street Substation, which, you know, all these substations are in the eighty-five to a hundred percent capacity right now. And, and the sites that were chosen for those substations just aren't big enough to be able to build the redundant capacity we need in there without taking them out of service. And when you start taking those substations out of service, you, you start, you know, that, that can be an extended period of time and the complications that can come from having to shed load to other substations that are also pretty well-loaded. I mean, it's, it's, it's a extremely high gamble risk to do that. So, what we'd like to do is build the new substation that we can utilize so that when we finish that, we can then remove the two substations that are current. And, and both those substations are forty-seven years old. And, you know, I mean, the, the fact of the matter is, most of all the equipment, from the time it was built to what we will get now, will be completely modernized and, and, you know, we'll be in pretty dang good shape, you know, for the next twenty-five, thirty years. And then thirty years from now, they'll be having the same discussion about what they're gonna do with it, but I, I don't know that I'll be here then.
Yeah, we're gonna reach densities in the city.
And that is exactly right.
Not necessarily you need three hundred percent capacity there, you're gonna reach a, a point where you just can't serve anymore customers.
Well, our service territory is, it is drawn and it is, you know, committed by law to, to stay exactly like it is. Now, there's some pockets of potential to grow, but it's not anywhere near, you know, what, what it could be if, if we could expand anywhere we wanted to.
Mr. Peterson, I appreciate your comments and, and clarifying that and, and owning that. And, you know, I understand the council was thrown under the bus and said, "We made that decision," and we didn't make that decision. We would have had to decide, but, you know, there was nothing sinister about it. It was, you know, it was just an engineering, you know, judgment.
Absolutely. It was, I mean, it's, it was a nice property and it's a nice place to put a substation. There's no doubt about it. And I'm, and I wouldn't, you know, try to defend that, but what I would like to do though is, is try to start working with Marcus on a purchase agreement, or if you want to consider the Simpson Field part of the property as a...
So, now you're saying you basically have two options right now?
Right. One of them is the property we own at Simpson Field. I think that takes away some of the opportunities for, for that site there to be used for other purposes and recreation, and I thought...
Let's not completely exclude it because we are going to be talking about recreational facilities in the very near future, like in the next hour. So, you never know, might be an option.
And that's fine, and that saves us having to worry about who we're gonna buy property from, but either way, we need to move. And if, if we can make that decision and have something prepared for the next council meeting.
You were saying that you gave some appraisals. I recall seeing that, Richard. I apologize if you did and I didn't, and I didn't get it.
It was, it was an attachment to the, and I just sent the email out this afternoon.
Oh, and I hadn't read it.
I mean, you may not have even seen it yet, but it, but it was a summary of these sessions, this report that I was... I anticipated the long agenda for the work session, and I knew the odds of being able to cover everything were slim, and it turned out to be none, but, but I'm glad I got this opportunity, so...
All right. Well, we're gonna bulldoze through this agenda tonight. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close council comments. I would like to entertain a motion to table Agenda Item Five, the final adoption of an ordinance amending zoning ordinance number twelve fifty-three.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second to table Agenda Item Five. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of tabling this, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Okay, that is tabled. Thank you for that, Mr. Diaz. Item Six is a final adoption of ordinance, amending zoning ordinance number twelve fifty-three, request to amending ordinance number eleven forty-two, known as the Greeno Professional Village Planning and Development, or PUD, to allow the building orientation, parking area orientation in twenty-five-foot-tall light poles reflected, and the site plan approval request. And you can see the number, this property of the Community Bank National Association generally located at two hundred North Greeno Road, Fairhope, Alabama. This was introduced at the April twenty-third city council meeting.
And thank you, Council President, and this is, of course, the second reading of this item. And just to reiterate very briefly, Community Bank desires to, to construct a new branch at Lot One of the Greeno Professional Village, which is at the intersection of Greeno and Edwards. And that is a PUD, Plan Unit Development, requires a site plan review for each of the sites, which you will see is the next item on your agenda. During the process of reviewing that site plan review, we discovered the items included in this agenda. This will reconcile the site with the PUD ordinance and also the condition of approval that's reflected in both the staff report and the planning commission's recommendation for approval, addresses the lighting issue. That condition of approval will maintain the lighting with the wording of the original PUD for Greeno Professional Village.
Okay. Clark, the ordinance as written includes, I'm sure, staff recommendation. Did it include planning commission recommendation as well? And now, let me ask you, was the planning commission recommendation, did, did the staff also recommend approval of the planning commission recommendation?
Yes, sir. So, we, in fact, it's on page eight of the packet and of the, we mirror the staff report from the planning commission meeting. We convert it to a city council form, and so that is mirrored on page eight and reflects both staff and the planning commission's recommendations for approval.
Okay, it's included. I just want to make sure we didn't have to make the motion with that caveat.
Yes, sir. It is included and preserved within that document.
Okay, very good. Okay, council, any questions? Okay, hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clark, if you'll call a question.
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you, thank you. Okay, item number seven on tonight's agenda is a site plan approval, request of Gulf State Engineering and Dale Partners LLC for site plan approval for Community Bank National Association generally located at Lot One of the Greeno Professional Village PUD. This is the same site.
Yes, sir, Council President. Same site. This is the site, this is the actual site... This is the site, this is the actual site plan review required by the PUD governing that development. What I'd call the council members' attention to is in the recommendation of both the staff and the planning commission, there is an accept, there's a request by the applicant for acceptance of a waiver for LID techniques. They are able to incorporate six out of the 10 LID techniques into the site. The ultimate goal is, of course, is removing 80% of the total suspended solids of the stormwater, which upon engineering review, that accomplishes. So that is, that is reflected in both recommendations. The, it is also a condition of approval is the rezoning that we visited in the item prior to this. So that condition has been satisfied, is reflected in both. What I would point out is, in the planning commission, they also, also requested and reflected in their recommendation to add some sidewalks on the south side of the property line along Edwards Avenue. That is an additional recommendation of the planning commission and staff concurs.
So I don't see the actual resolution for site plan approval. So do we need to make the motion, Clark, to approve the site plan with staff and planning commission recommendations? That's what I would suggest.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, I will entertain a motion for site plan approval, SR 17.03, inclusive of the staff recommendations and planning commission recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any questions of staff? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of the site plan approval with the recommendation stated, all say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, that is approved. Thank you. Item 8 is a resolution that the City Council hereby approves and adopts the recommended $5 per pump-out fee associated with the pump-out station located at the Fairhope docks. I think that's pretty straightforward and needs no explanation. I think that's the maximum allowable charge that we can levy because of the grant that we've received to help fund this. I will entertain a motion to approve and adopt that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item 9 is a resolution that the City Council of the City, City Council of the City, yeah, I don't know what does it, the City Council of the City, the settlement agreement. What we're trying to say is, the settlement agreement is hereby approved and the mayor and the city clerk of the city are hereby authorizing, directed to execute and attest respectably for and on behalf of the city, the settlement agreement with the utilities board of the city of Daphne. And counsel, this was discussed in executive session, the last meeting. So I'll entertain a motion to have that settlement agreed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion, if it's even allowed? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Item 10 is a resolution, the city being unable to reach an agreement with the buying group, the city council hereby rescinds Resolution Number 3043-18 and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute extension number 1 for the contract with Mallory Elevator Company of Florida, bid number 012-17, citywide elevator maintenance, 2017, for one additional year as per the terms and conditions of the original awarded bid. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, this is for the original terms. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item 11 is a resolution, the city council authorizes the purchase of six Motorola portable radios, APX 6000 seven slash 800 megahertz, with accessories and software for the IT department. This type of equipment needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List and therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a total cost of $24,996. Jeff, are you there?
There he is.
Jeff, the, there's six portable radios, it says for the IT department. Are these actually being used by the IT department?
This was actually brought to council on March 26. The original count was 10 radios. When I sent the PO to the vendor, we, she realized that she left off quite a few items. So we're having to reduce the amount of radios that we purchased and the items have changed. So I was advised that we need to go back in front of council. I think that's what that first sentence is trying to say, that the city council amends Resolution 3027-18.
Yeah, I kind of skipped over that because it was a little fragmented.
Yeah, right.
So now, these will be used by whom?
These are for emergency purposes. This is to give out radios to department heads in case of, you know, a natural disaster. It, so we'll have communications with the city, county, and statewide.
Is this, and who else has these in the city right now? Do the police and fire department currently have these?
Police and fire department, right. This will be on their own channel, city, like a citywide channel that the police department, fire department, and city directors could get on at one time.
$4,000 radio.
Yeah, very expensive. Is that using the new, that new P25 standard?
Counsel, any questions? Is this budgeted? Yes.
Yes.
$1,000 under, because we went to six, not 10. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to purchase the radios.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I guess the question is, you know, if we budgeted 10, six can do the job. But if six can do the job, why would we budget 10? I'll budget four next year. Yeah, I needed, it was requested of me to get 10, but just because of the budget, we had to reduce the number.
Gotcha.
That'll exceed the budget, which I think if we had six, it's better than none. So we'll get the four next year.
How long do you think this will be? State of the art? Are they gonna be obsolete in a couple of years?
No, that's, that's part of the price, that they keep them, keep the software and everything up to date. The same radio system, county and state is using.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jeff? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item 12 is a resolution, the city council approves the selection of Magnolia River for professional consultation services for the cast down replacement program with system mapping and system modeling and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate the fee schedule. This is for the gas department, I assume. I'll entertain a motion to approve the selection.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there someone here from the gas department? Richard, where is this outfit out of?
They are out of, it's potatoes. And their presence is all across the southeast and they started out specializing in strictly gas work.
I got you.
But they have since branched out and they do other utility work. But I'm familiar with their gas work and being part of the Alabama National Gas.
I just didn't, I hadn't heard of them.
Right.
Okay.
But they've done a lot of cast down replacement and they've done a lot of modeling.
They had a good track record.
Yes, sir.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
Yes, she did.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Peterson? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, selection is approved. Thank you, counsel. Item number 13 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of SafeSpan LLC for professional bridge inspection services for the public works department for bridge inspections and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate the fee schedule. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
I guess, Richard, it's already by the same thing, just not familiar with these people.
And what bridges?
As you know, we have five bridges that classify as such. We're required through state and federal requirements to have them inspected every two years. This is just an annual thing. SafeSpan is actually headquartered in Silver Hill, Alabama, so, and, and the biggest challenge is, is that we've got a preliminary meeting in June that they have to attend on our behalf and then the inspections have to be uploaded into the system with the state by July. And these folks have, when reviewing their proposal, looks like they can turn it fast enough and you'll actually hopefully have on the next agenda to issue the contract to move forward with them.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, counsel. Motion passes. Item 14 is a resolution, the city council approves the selection of Mot McDonald. Close, Matt. To perform professional engineering services for outfall assessments for 2018 and approves and accepts the not to exceed amount of $9,526 and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract with Mot McDonald for the same. Mr. Johnson, can you discuss this?
Yes, sir. I gotta brag on Sherry Lee. As you know, for our MS4 requirements, we have to inspect and correspond to any owners of all outfalls within our system on every, we gotta see, we gotta inspect every one of them every four years. Sherry Lee landed a grant in that amount that took us out of having to do that either in-house or pay for it. And so Mot McDonald has qualified, they did our original assessment and mapping, and we're gonna use them to do this year's inspections and reporting on that.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay. We have a motion and a second.
No, you don't.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the selection.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the selection, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, they are selected. Thank you, counsel. Item 15 is a resolution to award the bid for a metal billy maintenance barn for the soccer complex for the rec department, Takimco Incorporated, with a total bid proposal of $25,347. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a little under budget, about $4,500. Any discussion? Does that include electrical and everything in the building or is that just the slab and building itself?
That's just the metal building slab we've been doing in-house. And I figured it costs around, you know, $7,500 for the concrete. But we'll use city labor for that. And there'll be, there'll be minimal electricity in there.
Okay, and I'll just say this has been planned since we plan the soccer fields. Okay. Have a motion and a second.
Yes, she did.
There's so many items. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any final discussion, counsel? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of awarding the bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Item 16 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope votes to purchase 21,000 linear feet of gas pipe for the gas department to replenish inventory and authorizes procurement from consolidated pipe and supply company based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama, Section 41-16-51B7. Say that real quick. To obtain, quote, "The total cost will be $18,690." I'll entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item 17 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope votes to purchase a 2018 Ford F-150 Supercab 4x2 pickup for the fire department. Type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List, therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a cost not to exceed $26,295.
1,300 over.
1,300 over budget. I'll entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 18 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope votes to purchase a 2018 Ford F-150 Supercab 4x2 pickup for the meter department. Type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List, therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a total not to exceed $22,956, which is under budget. I will entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I guess my question is, how is the fire department's, is it outfitted more? It's, I don't know, 3,500 more? Couldn't get two of them at that price, I guess. Same exact truck, on paper. I mean, I'm sure it's not the same, but 2018 Ford F-150 Supercab. Have a motion and a second.
Yes, she did.
Any other questions? Anybody else note that? Anybody awake?
Next item.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item 19, a resolution, the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of a Powermaster 7332 three-phase metering site analyzer for the electric department from Tri-State Utility Products as sole source provider in the state of Alabama for power metrics products. The units must fit into our existing standardized system and are exempt from formal bid pursuant to the Code of Alabama. Total cost is $37,740. The city council amends the budget to move $37,740 from operating supplies to capital outlay for the Powermaster 7332 three-phase metering site analyzer. Entertain a motion to approve that procurement?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item 20 was added at the beginning of the meeting. This is the park fees ordinance, and this would be the amending the ordinance number 1613. I'd like to have somebody introduce the ordinance for these amendments.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay. Counsel, once again, the changes will, stated that, make sure I get the wrong one there, that you must be, you can be a city resident to get a sticker, or you can be a resident of 36532 zip code plus a Fairhope utility customer. And you must present the decal on the vehicle. You must show proof of residency of walking or riding a bicycle. And you may also be a city of Fairhope employee presenting a current employee badge, may also be granted entry free of charge. I would love to see someone make the motion to suspend with the rules and a vote for immediate consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for immediate consideration. Any discussion on that? Clark, will you call the question?
Council President.
Aye.
Place 2.
Aye.
Place 3.
Aye.
Place 4.
Aye.
Place 5.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries now for final adoption as amended. I'd like to entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Say thank you, counsel, for making, making this right, I believe. Okay, Clark, will you call a question?
Council President.
Aye.
Place 2.
Aye.
Place 3.
Aye.
Place 4.
Aye.
Place 5.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ordinance is amended. Hallelujah. Item Number Twenty-One is electrical contract for the Fairhope docks, and I'll read this resolution. This was also added at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, be it resolved, the governing body, the City of Fairhope, uh, Alabama, as follows, the City of Fairhope has voted to procure an electrician for the Fairhope docks to furnish and install all labor and electrical equipment for the new fueling system and the labor and equipment are available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance contract. Therefore, does not have to be let out for bid. This has already been nationally bid through NJPA's bid process. The cost will be seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. The budget will be amended for this unbudgeted item. Entertain a motion to pass this?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to procure the electrician and the equipment. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Councilman Brown, we got through twenty-one items in twenty-seven minutes. Next item is public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, uh, you can come forward and state your name and address for the record. And before you approach, uh, the podium up here, I will say that we are, uh, going to